I'd like to bring to order the meeting of the Youngstown Academic Distress Commission Meeting, today Tuesday, July 18th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Ryan Binio.
Present.
Dr. Barbara Ruthers. Jennifer Rollers, present. Vincent Shivers.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, we have approval of the July 18th, 2017 Agenda, Agenda for today's meeting. That Agenda was provided to the members of the Commission in advance of today's meeting. Do you have any comments, corrections? Motion to approve? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call, Ryan Binio.
Yes.
Dr. Barbara Ruthers. Jennifer Rollers.
Yes.
Vincent Shivers.
Motion carried. Thank you. At this time, we have approval of the past meeting that occurred on April 20th. Approval of the minutes from that meeting. Those minutes were provided in advance of the meeting and members of the Commission. Do we have any corrections, comments on those minutes? Do we have a motion to approve of?
Motion to approve.
Second? Thank you. Roll call.
Ryan Binio.
Yes.
Jennifer Rollers.
Yes.
Vincent Shivers.
Motion carried. At this time, we're going to go ahead and proceed into our CEO update. We have a full agenda today, hearing from CEO Mohib along with many of the senior staff of the district. So, at this time, I'd like to proceed with that.
Good afternoon, everyone, Academic Distress Commission. I think everyone will be excited to hear that you will not be hearing too much from me. You'll be hearing the majority of this from my team. I do want to take the opportunity just to say that I can't believe it's been a year already. Just a little bit over a year by some days, but it's felt like honestly like ten. But it's been some of the most fun work I've ever done in my career. I feel so blessed to be part of this community and, you know, from what you'll see today, from the data to some of the things that were done, to the next steps, that we have after this year a good baseline, I have a strong understanding, I have the team in place of what needs to happen and what will happen in the coming years. So, we do want to take some time to highlight the work that we've done, reflect on some of the challenges, and have an honest conversation around some of our, some of the lowlights and some of the things that we really truly need to improve. So, just to update us, I just want to remind us of the goals of our strategic plan. This is the plan that we created as a community, and this is something that we hold ourselves to accountable every single day. And we have the five goals of academic achievement, personalized learning, parent and community support, world-class workforce, and a strong foundation of operations. Looking at some of the highlights, some things that just, you know, we had so much stuff happen this year, but there's some things that I just wanted to just point out. Our annual Title I Conference with parents this year, we saw an increase in the amount of parents that were there. We had about 325 parents that were celebrating. And it was just an amazing event where we saw parents from across the city come together and fill a room with, I would honestly say about 500 people in that room, celebrating our students and honoring the work of parents across the district. We have really shifted to accountability and data-driven decision-making. We met and exceeded our goal of giving instructional feedback to teachers. We've built a comprehensive assessment system. We had an enormous preschool expansion. We had an after-school program that found over 1,000 kids in the program more than over the last year. We had a huge increase in our summer school program, and we started another session just yesterday. The Parent Involvement Program called Pride, which Linda Holley will talk about, is another shining example of how we're giving back and working with our community. Our Transportation Department, which I'm excited that you'll, she'll end the presentation with, has made major transformations throughout this year to become one of the leaders in our, in our district around efficiencies and safety. We have school gardens now in every school. We've reconfigured the district, which was a monumental task, and we've gotten great feedback from the community in that move. We have new building leadership and new district leadership, which I believe are amongst the best in the state. We have school deans in every building to help with our culture and climate. And speaking of culture and climate, we saw this year a 55% reduction in out-of-school suspensions and a 33% reduction in in-school suspension. And I wanted to highlight both of those, because a lot of times if a school district or a school system is trying to, is trying to fake the numbers, you'll, you'll see a decrease in in-school, or I'm sorry, you see a decrease in out-of-school and an increase in in-school. But we didn't see that here. We saw everything going, going down. And John LaPlante and I will go through some data to talk a little bit more in-depth around some of these trends that we saw, but really proud of that. And then the CTC, I'm sorry, Schoffin and the MCCTC merger, which really shows what happens when communities come together, put their egos aside, and start doing what's right for children. We still have challenges, and they continue, you know, we still have some issues with, and some challenges of reuniting with the school board and some other constituents in the area. But at the end of the day, it's, change is hard, and we have to move beyond some of the district practices that have happened for decades here in this country, I'm sorry, in this county. We still have some challenges in leadership, but we've reduced that quite a bit. Parental involvement, while it's still a highlight, it's also a challenge, as we haven't reached all of as many parents as we're going to. Staffing is still a concern. We still see about 50, well, between 50 and 60 positions that are open right now that we need to fill before September 5th. And then there are always continual distractions that we try to filter away from our schools so we can continue our building leadership and our teachers doing what's right for children. And to move beyond, I think we've, I think not just myself, but the entire senior leadership and the building leader has shown that we are committed to persevering on this, to be focused on our kids. I've made the commitment to build a strong central leadership, the central leadership has helped me build a strong building leadership. And we also have had a major shift into high-impact professional development for both teachers and leaders. At this time, I would like to call up Joe Moreno and our county superintendent, Dr. Ron Iarussi, to talk about the Schoffin and MCCTC partnership.
Okay, thank you. First of all, just wanted a little bit of background, we can look at the data, but I think it's important to note that Ron Iarussi and I have been talking, and others have been talking about this possibility of a collaboration between Schoffin and Moni County for at least five years, because of the decreasing enrollment numbers in Youngstown, as we all know. And, you know, this provides us a better opportunity to provide more services to our students, more support services for our teachers in Youngstown, and enable them to really focus on improving the report card, and more than that, really focusing on improving our students and giving the best we can do. And once again, the data speaks for itself, it was becoming extremely high per pupil cost to operate our own Career Center as the city of Youngstown. We don't have the 30,000 kids we had in '73 when it was built, so, you know, it only made sense. So, Ron and I got together, and Mr. Mohib talked, when he came on board, we talked about this with others, we involved our teachers in the Career Center, we involved a lot of people, and we thought it was a good time to do this. In addition to that, Mr. Mohib had talked to me about doing some other things in the district, he felt he needed help in some other areas, and I, you know, can't be in two places at once, so I thought it just makes sense that the way it's going to be is that Moni County is going to take over the administrative functions of the Career Center. Our teachers, employees will still be Youngstown City employees, we just think this is going to be a good opportunity. We really believe this will open up this side of the county to students from neighboring districts attending Schoffin under the auspices of both Youngstown City and Moni County Career Center. So, Ron, I'll turn it over to you first, want to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Joe. First of all, let me say thank you to the Distress Commission and to Mr. Mohib, the CEO, for allowing me the opportunity to come in and talk to him today. On behalf of the Moni County Career and Technical Center and the Board of Education, I can't tell you how excited we are about these possibilities. As Joe said, you know, we've had lots of discussions about how we can collaborate and grow each other's programs and make sure that career technical education is a large part of the education process here in the community. We've had numerous conversations with the Manufacturers Coalition, the healthcare industry, Eastern Gateway Community College, and Youngstown State University to make sure that we provide every opportunity for all of our students in this county to have an opportunity to either enroll in college, enlist in the military, or become employed in the area. And that's our goals here today, is to make sure that all of our students in our county have that opportunity. We are fortunate at the Career Center over the last couple of years, because career education there is what we do. That's all we do. We work with our school districts that provide us with students, but our main goal for 11th and 12th graders is to work on career and technical education and the 23 programs that we have there to offer. We're excited about the team that we have assembled to come down to Schoffin and work with the teachers there and the students as well. Just to mention a few of them, Dr. Mike Seville has been with us for a couple of years. He actually comes from Rockford, Illinois, and he was, he was responsible for starting Career and Tech Academies in the Rockford School District there. Nina Karlovic is going to also be a principal at Schoffin. She has 11 years of experience in career technical education as a teacher. This is her first year as, as an administrator, but over the past couple of years, she's been in a teacher leadership role. And finally, Maurice Taylor is coming on board as well. He's worked for the ESC as an instructional consultant, and also he has worked at P. Ross Berry and has helped out with some administrative roles there. And so, we think we have a really good team that's going to be able to dedicate themselves to helping the staff there do a couple of things. Here's, here's our goals for this year. And let me reiterate what Joe said, there's no plans at this time to take over Schoffin or anything like that. We want to share our resources to help grow both programs. We'll look at opportunities to share later on, but right now, what we're interested is helping teachers make sure that they provide coursework necessary, competencies that are required for those courses, so that every kid has a chance to pass the web exams, and that's part of the report card there that we've been working on at the Career Center. We plan to do those things there. And lastly, it's required that every student that participates in career tech education receive, or have an opportunity to receive an industry credential. And so, those areas are the areas that we're going to spend looking at this year and helping teachers make sure that their, their programs are aligned to that, so that it results in more opportunities for the kids. I think I just about covered all that. Again, it's a, it's a pleasure to be involved in this partnership. I'd like to commend both the Commission and the CEO. I've known Krish now for about a year, and the team that he's assembled here, the work that he's done has, has been refreshing and exciting for the rest of the school districts in the county. We all know that, that every school district has to be successful in order for, for this community to grow both economically and culturally. And so, again, I'm looking forward this opportunity to share services and to share people. Also, you know, Krish is such a charming individual that many of our folks that work for us now work for him, and so, we thought maybe this would be a better idea that could protect some more of our folks there. So, thank you again very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Ron. I just want to add, once again, the fact that we really feel that this will enable us to better use our resources in Youngstown. You know, we're going to take advantage of some of that big money that the county has, and I think that's going to help our teachers and our students to grow, because they can really focus more on what's needed there. So, it's going to be great, I promise you that. I said that Mr. Mohib had asked me to take on some other duties, and one of those is going to be involved with our athletic resurgence here in Youngstown. You know, we just hired a, had maybe retired, and we, Mr. Mohib hired a new athletic administrator. It's going to be a lot different than it was in the past. We're talking about a total, we're calling that athletic resurgence. We're creating a structure that will forward more focused adults who present, more adults working in the buildings with our kids. That's the goal. And by the new structure and what some of the things Mr. Sheppas and his assistants have set up, you're going to see that this, this will promote that. You know, we've gone to KDA buildings this year, we want to provide feeder programs in all of those buildings to feed into our high schools. That's very important. You know, you can't just talk about athletics in the high school level without growing it. You know, the successful communities, wherever you go, have good feeder programs. We're going to develop those in our elementary, excuse me, our KDA buildings in the future. We will have athletics at both Chaney and East. Chaney's going back to comprehensive high school. The plan is, I've talked to Mr. Sheppas, and it looks like probably the 18, 19 school year, we will be starting many varsity sports at Chaney. We're looking at that right now, we're getting people in place, and we're excited about that. So, once again, Chaney will return to its glory days of athletics, and East will continue to go to their glory days, which they were very proud of in the past. The idea is, you know, we want our schools to exhibit pride in the community. And, you know, we could say athletics isn't important, it's not, we all know that communities that have successful athletic programs, that carries over a pride in the community. It's people something to do on the weekends, it makes them feel ownership for the schools. So, it's important that the athletic program mirror the academic program. We feel the athletics program will make the academic program stronger, kids are going to see the connection, they're going to understand they need to do well academically and participate in sports and extracurriculars, so we really feel this will be a good incentive for the kids. And once again, we want the students to be successful in academics and athletics. Part of the plan is, we will have adults in the building working with our athletes to make sure that they maintain their GPA, pass their courses, pass their state tests, because the goal is to get them through high school and on to the next level. We all know, we've had many successful athletes come out of Youngstown City in the past, many of them. We want to get that going, again, keep that resurgence going. And we definitely feel that by working with our athletes, our student athletes at East and Chaney, that this will encourage them to pursue higher education, go on to college, but we want them to be prepared, be able to get the scholarships, be able to do what they need to do to be successful in life. So, once again, we're talking about, we're calling it an athletic resurgence, it's just in the baby stages now, but you're going to see great things, I think, coming out of Youngstown City in the future in the field of athletics. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Sometimes I feel like I need that Emmy music to kind of stop and slow down, so we can say those two hours, you put a superintendent in front of it, Mike, we don't ever stop. But want to talk a little bit about the budget update. Greg Slemons is our CFO, he's still our CFO, but he has taken some much-needed rest and is not with us here today. But overall, what I'm going to talk about the budget is that we are operating fiscally responsibly. We are making sure that what we are doing makes sense, we're looking at a five-year forecast, and we're ensuring that we are not running down into deficit spending or leading at the end of the five years in negative territory. So, as you see, I did provide you guys a copy of the five-year forecast. If you look at page five, I'm sorry, page three in the five-year forecast, you can see that, you know, over the next three years, our, our ending balance is, and our surplus is, remains about the same. Right now, we're expecting at the end of this year a $23.5 million surplus, and in the course of the next two years, without any adjustments being made, we're looking at a $22.1 million surplus. As you see in that, in the white section where it starts dropping down, that's if the levy that we currently have is not renewed. We don't expect to be looking for new levies, but we will seek to extend the levy assumably. But that is not the role of CEO, that's the role of the school board, and that's a decision that they will have to, that's a decision that they'll have to face when, when the time comes for it. But overall, what I'm trying to show with this brief summary, and you can dig through this whole packet, it's a very detailed report on our five-year forecast, is that although we have added programs, although we have added personnel, we have done so in a responsible manner. Some other things Greg wanted me to discuss here is that as we're going through this, we are aligning our school budgets and all purchases to the goals of the strategic plan. There was a group of us that went and just trained on how to, not only how to build a strategic plan, but how to align every purchase to that strategic plan. And what systems do you have to put in place so that as building leaders, central office, as they're going through and looking at requisitions and looking at things that you want to purchase, how do you search for that return on the investment to make sure that what we're, what we're buying is going to lead to the goals that we've outlined in the strategic plan? We are creating a five-year general fund financial forecast, we had help from, from an outside company at a very reasonable rate to come and provide this for us, and we are looking for the trends in these areas. Some things we're also doing is we're creating efficiencies in the payroll banking, as, as many of our employees aren't here today can tell you that we've had struggles with, with payroll. I would say the majority of the concerns coming from either side of the union is when teachers aren't getting paid correctly, classified aren't getting paid correctly, so we're trying to find what is happening there and then trying to fix that so that we don't, so we can, if you come and you work for Youngstown City Schools, we want to make sure that you get paid appropriately, on time, every single time. We've consolidated our banking system, so we did have a problem in the past where payroll almost going to go out. We found that we were working with two banking, two banking institutions instead of one, so we were able to consolidate, consolidate that and work out a one payroll system, which would then alleviate any of the issues that happened on that day. Talked about going to OASBO and some of these workshops, and then we do have a condensed, a condensed fiscal year 2018 budget process, we put that in place in early April, we're working through that now, and we're expecting in the coming weeks to present the final budget for the coming school year. Some next steps is we're going to continue to monitor the efficiencies in the payroll banking process. We're, oh, this is the same slide. Oh, we're doing the same things again twice, because it's really important to do it. And then, some other next steps, we're going to continue work with the PFR software to develop the 2018 forecast. So, this was the PFR system that we used for the May, for the, for the May forecast, so we're going to do it again for the October forecast. We did a strategic risk, we're going to do a strategic risk management initiative for the next 24 months, so see where are the strengths and weaknesses, what are the challenges that are coming financially. And then we're going to develop clear understandings of what our current total cost of risk is and how it's measured. So, looking at some of the investments we have as well to make sure that we are setting out on clear footing. At this point, do you have any questions on the budget and the five-year forecast or anything related to finances?
Just the one, I know at the last one you spoke about the building, which means that the building leadership teams, and there was going to be input from the building principals and administrative staff, but just curious about how that process went.
So, that went well, and so what we're doing was, as you know, we've brought on new building principals. So, part of that now is rebuilding some of those building leadership teams, and what we want them to be able to do is get an understanding of, here's the money that you have, and how is it that you're going to spend it, well, here's the money that you have, and here are the goals of the strategic plan, and the goals for your specific building. How are you going to use these dollars that have been allocated to you to be a benefit to the additional resources that we've already provided? So, how is this now going to elevate you to the level that you need to be? And essentially, if you have this money, 100% of those funds have to be aligned to the strategic plan, and the funds need to be expended. And so, we've ran into problems in the past where we have sent money back to the state or to the federal government, and that cannot continue. So, we have clear metrics for principals, and 99% of the budgets need to be spent by the end of the year, but also when it comes to some of the title funds, we want those spent by April. The monies that we get, especially in the title funds, are meant to be spent on the children that we have in front of us today, not the students of the future. So, we want to make sure that we're being resilient and really keeping an eye on the finances and making sure not only are we spending the money, but we're spending it appropriately and we're spending it timely.
As I relates to the five-year forecast and the future years, years forward, I know even in the past you've talked about the fact that there's an intentional level of spending currently taking place to bolster the senior leadership structure within the district.
Right.
What have you done in the five-year forecast to show that tapering off in later years and reducing the top head nature of it?
When we look at, when we look at the staffing levels, the staffing levels as far as expenditures have stayed relatively the same. What we have seen an increase is in purchase service and professional development, and I do expect that to come off and roll back significantly over the next three or five years. Essentially, when we're in a district that is suffering so academically, we need to put in a heavy shot of professional development and supports and services for our teachers and for our students. So, we have spent quite a bit of money on professional development this year. We will continue to spend money on professional development next year, but what we're doing with our professional development is we're building teacher leaders within all of our schools, so that those can be the future developers in the coming years. I want to be able to have sustainable systems in place. So, these teachers, while they're not necessarily professional developers, and they're not going to be creating trainings, what we're doing is we're building model classrooms in every school. So, then teachers can go during the workday and get job-batted professional development to see high-quality instruction in their building with their own training. And so, that will significantly reduce the amount of professional development that we've, that we've placed. But as we're about to get into the data, you'll see that we still have pockets of, well, really, we, we have much increases that need to happen, but there are some other areas that are blatant that we did not get to this year, that we need to work on intensively in the coming year. So, that's a great lead-in to the next part, where John LaPlante and I are going to talk about the data that we just received. Again, this is all preliminary data, but as you guys know, John, he's a pretty smart guy.
Before we roll there, any additional questions related to financial matters of the district at this time? Do we have any questions? Any of the paperwork, or?
The five-year forecast is online, it's been there since May when we presented it. If you go to the website under the CEO section, you'll see it under the CEO minutes and CEO update minutes and agendas.
Thank you.
All right, John?
All right. Thank you very much. So, as Krish mentioned earlier, one of the, one of the things we're trying to do is do more with data in driving and informing decisions. And so, what I want to do today is share a little bit about the high-level data. Most of this is preliminary, our scorecard, our, I'm sorry, our report card is not finalized until after summer, we still have kids taking summer tests, so some of the data is preliminary, but I do want to share, share some of that with you. So, I'm going to go through some enrollment data, I'll talk a little bit about the challenges there, some high school GPAs, which is kind of an exciting slide, and I'm happy for you to see that. A little bit on attendance, not so happy. Discipline's a great slide, I guess that kind of went up and down, up and down, so, and then we'll talk about three to eight air testing, high school air testing. And lastly, I want to talk a little bit about data correlations, which is something this district, to my knowledge, hasn't done, hasn't done before.
And we may pass out some coffee before John talks about.
Not at all. It's not going to be that bad. All right, a little bit about enrollment. The right-hand column is the official ODE enrollment. ODE calculates their enrollment a couple of times a year based on small windows, so this is the official ODE enrollment, and you'll see a pretty constant, constant decline in that, in that overall enrollment. The other three columns are, I'm sorry, the other four columns, preschool, elementary, middle, and high school, those are, those are more, a little more accurate based on our total end-of-year number of days kids came to school. Now, the challenging part with this data is, in the past, we've enrolled our kids in special programs in Volney and Wilson and Kirkmere, but we haven't necessarily allocated those kids in their own building. We called them program schools, so even though they were sitting at Volney, their data all reported back to East. That was something that the previous Academic Distress Commission wanted to see happen. I kind of understand why, but it created all kinds of data reporting problems. And any principal who's been in the building knows that you don't really know how many kids are in your building, because some of them are in your building, some, some of them are over at Kirkmere, some are at Wilson. It just made recording very, very difficult. So, the only official numbers on this slide are the ones on the right. All the other slides are just my analysis based on where the kids were during the year. So, the long and short of it is, we saw a significant increase in preschool enrollment. As Krish mentioned, we made a change this year to all-day preschool, so that, that drove a pretty good enrollment increase. Elementary took a little bit of a hit, again, not, not too, not too significant. Middle schools were pretty constant, and again, middle schools are seventh and eighth grade in the district, because we have our elementaries at K through six, and then high schools, we saw a little bit of a decline in our high schools over the last three years. All right, so, one of the great things is with the school reconfiguration to all K-8s, we, we applied for and were granted three new IRNs, and IRN is a specific identifier for a building. So, Kirkmere, Volney, and Wilson will have their own IRNs, the kids are in those buildings, so we don't have to worry about kids not showing up in the correct buildings. So, when I'm standing up here talking to you next year about official enrollment, we'll be able to see each one of our IRNs properly accounted for, which is one of my main goals. When I talked to Krish about coming on board, is that he had to let me fix that, because it's something that's been a problem in the district for a long time, is not understanding exactly where the kids are. So, we're happy we're going to be able to fix that, starting actually yesterday, we enrolled our new SIS over yesterday, so we're excited about that. This is a great slide. So, one of the things we're really trying to do with reducing suspensions, you'll see, we've got a huge number of reductions in suspensions, which means kids are in school more, so we're really hoping that that's causing and driving these high school increases in GPAs. We saw Chaney's overall GPA increase just a touch. We saw East High School, their GPA go up quite a bit. Young Center Early College went up a touch, but overall, we saw a pretty healthy increase in our GPAs. Kids are doing better, kids are doing better in their classes, and we're excited about that.
And so, we're kind of, we're really excited about the grades, because as you can see, we're really excited about growth, we're always looking for growth in the game in the process, and although Chaney did not move much, we saw an increase in East where we paid a lot of attention this past year. But also, grades is a great indicator to show how well students are on track for graduation. So, it's a, grades are a better indicator than attendance, and they're a better indicator than test scores. So, seeing that our students are increasing their grades is a great benefit, and when[1785.25] And when Greg and Amanda talk about some of the systems we put in place under Goal One, they'll talk about a five-week review that kind of really drove some of the attention we had towards our students.
All right, we'll talk a little bit about attendance. Again, the high school, middle school, elementary, that attendance, what I do is I take all the raw data out, and then I separate it by grade, because I can't really pull it by building, because it's not really reported at the proper building. So again, some of these are our data analysis that I have to look at every single kid and figure out which building they're in. Unfortunately, despite a lot of the things that we've done, we did see a little drip, a little dip in attendance in each one of our sectors and in the district overall. Not a huge amount, but certainly not the way we wanted to, we wanted to go.
And so one thing we investigated around attendance was, we did find that, we did find that transportation was an issue, because we do in our five-week reviews, and we're trying to cheer our students, find out why they weren't coming to school. Oftentimes, if a child woke up late, they were not able to come to school because the walk zone for high schools was four miles. And so as, as Colleen will talk about in Goal Five, we've reduced that significantly, we're continually trying to reduce it. Right now, we have it zoned for one mile for high schools and one mile for the elementary schools, and we're not putting that out there yet, because we're still trying to reduce the numbers. So we know that if we can get our kids to school, we could hopefully start bussing more. I mean, honestly, if I lived three and a half miles away from high school and I want to go a full day, that's pretty tough. I don't know if I would go. I mean, I would go. So it would be tough.
And one of the other things we're doing with attendance, we can, in our high schools, we've only been taking daily attendance, which means the kid shows up, showed up in the morning, was marked present for homeroom, they were present for the day. And while in our K to sixes, that was okay, because those are all self-contained classes, so the teacher sees the kid all day, in high schools, it's not that way. So beginning with our, beginning this fall, we're going to be taking period attendance in our high schools. So every teacher will take attendance in every class period, and that will start, that will start the skips, so I'm excited to bring that. There are a lot of reports in our school information system for potential skips, so if they showed up in the morning, but now all of a sudden they're not there after, after lunch in fifth period, that will trigger a report for a potential skip, so we're excited.
And controversy, if a child showed up ready to school and came second period and stayed the entire day, we got no player for that child because we didn't take attendance. So we have fixed that, we have the system in place now, so next year we'll pull that.
All right, so this is another, this is probably one of the most exciting slides we have, and this is our discipline analysis. So that, the first set of graphs over on the left, that's in-school suspensions. This is by the number of days absent. So if the kid had one suspension and they were out for three days, that would show up as a value of three on this chart. So we'll see in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, emergency removals, and then total. You'll see we went from 12,800 and change days out of school in 2015, 16, to just about half that, 6,682, out of school, in school, and emergency removals. So these are days out of the classroom.
And again, and this shows how we're just forging our children differently. If we were just removing everybody from house school and putting them in school, you'd see the, you'd see the school much higher than it is, but you're seeing reductions involved. And we put a new code of conduct in place, we've trained all our teachers this year, and as much, as great as it is to celebrate 6,682 incidences this year, that's still far too many. So we need to continually work with our teachers, with our students, with our parents, rebuild relationships, get a better understanding of the, of the new code of conduct and some of the trainings and some of the strategies that we're going to be using should reduce these numbers.
All right, we wanted to look at this just a little, a slightly different way in that we looked at just the disciplines at the high school. So we looked at Chaney's in-school suspensions versus East's, Chaney's out-of-school suspensions versus East's. You'll see a great disparity between the number of discipline incidents between Chaney and East's, Chaney's emergency removals in East, and then total. So in the high schools, we went down 42% in the number of days absent from the classroom.
And so I asked John to show it this way, because I wanted to make the, I wanted to remind us, it's part of the plan and part of the decisions around the configuration. So it's apparent from this data that we have two very different schools in a very small community, and that wasn't okay with us, we wanted to have equal programs, we wanted to have heterogeneous grouping of our students, and what existed right now wasn't, it just didn't exist. So before, we are going to have those heterogeneous groupings, but it also means that Chaney is going to have, you know, we put in different administrators there, they're actually at all high schools, but we are also going to increase the amount of professional development training for those teachers around culture and climate. We're also putting culture and climate teams in every single building, and it's something that we're going to continually be monitoring and training on this month.
Okay, so leaving discipline, we're going to jump into some air analysis. So air is our state test, and so what you see here, these are the math test results from the spring of 2017. Now, what I did with this analysis is I did look at where the kids counted. So there's a report called Where Kids Count. So the only kids that show up on this particular report are kids that were in a particular building for, I'm sorry, with the district for the entire year, this is a broken out by building. So these are only kids that have been with us the entire year, from the beginning of the year through the time they tested. If they came to us halfway through the year, they don't count in these analyses. All right, so these aren't kids that we get from community schools or we get from other schools throughout the year that show up a couple weeks before testing. Those kids, they don't count with the district, they actually end up rolling up to the state level because they weren't in one place for the entire year. So this is our math test analysis. We're excited about the, the increase in grade three and grade four math scores. Unfortunately, the rest of the year, the rest of the grades, five, six, seven, and eight, all saw declines in each one of those, in each one of those grades. And I think this, this particular data, when we saw it, I think this data informed, informed some decisions for the district.
And so clearly disappointed in our fifth through eighth grade, and carries on into high school as well. And so conversations with senior leadership, conversations with the union as well, we will be making a shift away from our current program, K to eight, I'm sorry, K to twelve, because we're not seeing the results that we'd like to see, especially in six through twelve, where it's a blended program, where there's a heavy reliance on a computerized system, it's also a spoiled curriculum, I think teachers are struggling as well. And so we're looking at programs that are, that'll, that would be a benefit for the Youngstown City School, but that also have a better reputation and have been researched and reviewed by, by third parties to say it's a high-quality program. And as it exists right now, our K to five program is a program that has been rated at the highest level, but our six through twelve program is not. Brian?
Question, I'm assuming these are state-based tests, the score percentage, they're administered, you're executing those through PC, through computers, students are interfacing with technology? I guess two questions. Changes year over year in, in the content of the test and impact of requiring students to interface with technology and how prepared are we? I know at Western Reserve that was an issue, we tackled this last year, where we recognize if we don't give students enough quality time on those devices and understanding how to interface with technology, you get a false story on the test because they're struggling.
Right, that's why we're pushing the one-to-one rollout faster than we expected than prior to you being here. But you're correct, I can't talk too much about the changes to the state test, because I haven't really seen the state data to see, are there grade levels that have been struggling throughout the, throughout the state? But we do have to get technology in the hands of our students every year. We have now put iPads with our, really, our kindergarten and preschool, so we're trying to implement as much technology to our students, but essentially, it's not about using apps. At some point, the kids have to be able to create, through the use of technology, they expect they have to be able to have keyboard skills and technologies, and they have to do the things that you and I do on paper, highlight, underline, narrate. They have to be able to do that with the computer. We don't have those capacities, we didn't have this test year, but we're building it for this month's school.
This is our English Language Arts test, again, across each grade. I think we made a, we, we made a press release earlier about third-grade ELA, so that's that increase that you see there. I think we, the numbers we had published were 7% increase. That was before Where Kids Count was finalized, so it actually went from 27 to 35.3 for our, so it actually was a little bit higher than 7% once we looked at just the kids that counted in the Youngstown City School District. Grade four and grade five also saw increases, so we're excited about those. The other grades, however, showed, showed some smaller decreases, certainly not at the level of math, but again, six, seven, and eight did show a trend that we would certainly like to reverse for next year.
And so looking at the math compared to the ELA, not all that surprising, but when you think about where the focus was, we did have a focus on reading, we're going to continue to focus on reading, particularly if our children can't read, they really can't, they're not going to be successful in any other course that they're in. So we're not ignoring the other areas, but we will continue to focus on reading.
All right, next we'll take a look at some high school results, and then I've only got two more slides, and I'll be back. So in, in high school, we saw, we saw some increases in some of our tests, we saw some decreases in others. Algebra one and geometry, algebra one showed, this, I'm sorry, this is at Chaney, so these are the kids that were at the, at the Chaney High School. Algebra one showed a little bit of an increase, geometry, however, went down a little bit. The one thing I do want to talk about geometry, though, is we had about, about 30% more kids this year take the geometry test. I think it was 400, 430-ish took geometry this year as opposed to about 320 last year. So we had a huge increase, and then the other two took the geometry exam. English Language Arts one, we were happy to see that increase in English Language Arts two. So ELA one is the ninth grade test, ELA two is the 10th grade test, so we saw, we saw increases in both of those at Chaney. Biology and American history didn't fare so well, and American government saw a slight increase. Now, the, before I show you the next slide, I guess I think this gets to what Chris was talking about earlier. The percentage is zero on the left and 70 at the top, so this next slide is, it's on the same scale, and this next slide is how East High School did on the same set of tests. So these are, these are the percent proficiencies from 16 to 17. Algebra one, American government, American history. So again, we saw some, we saw some increases, ELA one went up to East, geometry didn't do so well, ELA two, we saw some decreases. American government went up a touch, and algebra went up a touch, but overall, you'll see the scale of proficiencies between, between Chaney and East.
So this is the reason, another reason, clear reason why we went back to the reconfiguration. It's not okay to take your highest achieving students and put them in one school and then have everyone else go up to another, especially when then we look at a high school system where there's no coaching, no support. We have replaced principals at both districts and at both schools, basically the entire leadership teams. We are making a very serious statement that we are not okay with our, with our high school levels, and we are going to put intensive support into these high schools. And if we can't find the capacity here to provide support, we will find it somewhere. Because what I see, 0.47, one kid in geometry at East High School passed that test, when 2.6% of our freshmen passed the algebra test. And our highest percentage is 10%. I mean, 90% of our kids are below level East. I mean, I don't know if I need to say anything, but this is not okay. And so we're not going to accept this, we're not, we'll do whatever it takes for these children to be successful, for all of our children to be successful. And we need to have good role models for our children, we have to have good examples of high-quality instruction. It's why we have put so much time and effort into professional development, and yes, we started that in March and April, but it's definitely starting in July. So we're going to get these things as quickly as we possibly can, we're going to provide the support for our children and for our students and for our families, and we hope to never see a slide like this again.
All right, my last slide, promise. So one of the things that we did over the last few weeks is we looked at data correlations. So one of the things we're always trying to figure out is the, the metric, the metrics that we analyze in the year, are they good predictors of how kids will do? Because that's a lot of the data the teachers use to inform their instruction, to make reading groups, to identify extra academic interventions. Is the data that they're looking at consistent with how they're going to do on the state test? And we can have discussions about whether we teach to the test or not, but the fact of the matter is, is we do get, we do get evaluated on those test results, we're seeing it today. So one of the things that we look at is we look at correlations. So just a brief statistics reminder, a correlation of data, if you have a positive one correlation, that means it's perfectly correlated. An increase in one variable means an increase in another. This is Dr. Larwin, so don't be thinking that I know all this, all right? So this is Dr. Larwin at YSU, right? Yeah, he knew it, Brian. So positive one's a perfect positive correlation, negative one's a perfect negative correlation, which means if something goes up, there's a, it's a decrease in the score, all right? Zero means there's no correlation whatsoever between those two sets of data. So what I did is ran a correlation analysis between some of our major metrics that we analyzed and how the kids did on the state test. So we had about 2,700 or 2,800 data points across our district. Just as a comparison, NWEA MAP, which is a different assessment system that we use, I talked to both Akron and Northwestern, they see correlation rates of around .8 to .9, and the folks in those districts say, if they get a certain score in NWEA, we know what they're going to get on air, almost without, without failure. So we ran that correlation analysis, and what we found is our STAR Renaissance data, both from ELA and MAP, were, came about .64, .63. Not bad, but certainly not at .8 or .9 like we want to see. All right, so what this is telling us is even though a kid might show up as green in a STAR Renaissance test, that's only, it's not very strongly correlated to how they're going to do. So that's showing a false positive to our, not positive, but a false sense of security to our teachers and who needs extra instruction and who doesn't. So that, these, these results really weren't what we wanted to see. So Chris, do you want to talk about the switch in the assessment system?
Yeah, so we're going to be using, so we use STAR, we use STAR Renaissance, we're helping that benchmark out, it didn't necessarily give us the data that we wanted, the estimates that we wanted to give us. So we're going to be making a switch to the NWEA MAP system. And as John showed, he has a .8 to .9 on the data that he ran from some schools here in Ohio. It was important to look at schools in Ohio because Ohio has the tier assessment. So a lot of times when you look at STAR, you look at NWEA, you know, they're looking at part, a smarter balance, or one of those assessments. So we had to make sure that we found it, John had to go and actually run the data himself to make these correlations. We'll be making a switch over to the NWEA MAP, which I think is the right decision, because when students are taking this assessment, it's more air-like, so it's going to, it'll be a good precursor, a good example of practice for them to take the actual air. And then we could also use that, that system to build personalized learning plans for each child.
We also looked at attendance. So we do, we make a, we make a great stride to make sure kids come to school. Unfortunately, however, as the data showed, attendance isn't the greatest predictor of success on the state test. Not that we really thought it would be, but it was just interesting to look at. Grades, you'll see there's a negative number there, remember I talked about a negative correlation? So as kids failed more classes, their air test scores decreased. So that showed a little bit of a negative correlation. Same thing with discipline. As they, as they had more and more discipline incidents, their air scores dropped a little bit, which is what we would have expected. All right, it's not enough to become an air test predictor, you know, .17, .18, .2. I've had a lot of discussions with folks across the state, how can attendance only be .2? It kind of defies logic as to why if kids aren't coming to school, it's not a predictor of how they do on the air test. But it's just, it's not a very strong predictor. Now, that's just a predictor of success on the air test. Not that behavior, attendance, and grades aren't important for success of the student, for success in school, for success in life, for building and supporting the whole child like we're trying to do in our strategic plan. Those still are very important metrics for us to look at. It's just in this one specific slice of data analysis, they weren't as strong a predictor as, as an external benchmark assessment, which is why we're excited to bring in NWEA starting at the beginning of September, so we can get three true benchmarks, fall, winter, and spring. Any questions for me? On data? Everyone's still awake? Thank you all very much.
So I know we're right around approaching the hour mark. Goal one is going to take a little bit longer than all the other goals, but hang with us, we still plan on finishing within the two hours. We want to be respectful of everybody's time, but I did ask them to not rush, because this is the guts of it, as you saw all the data and, you know, the highlights and some of the channels, just goal one and goal two, but really, goal one is where the work is happening around reading and math. So at this point, I'm going to have Amanda McGinnis and Greg Kibler come up and present on the work of Goal One.
Thanks for having me, I'm Greg Kibler, WEA chief of data, we're close to John, so it's all that stuff that you might have been snoozing through.
I was excited, so I can't wait to hear that now. Our first, our first goal, one, is dealing wholeheartedly around academic achievement. And so, we want to see what we can do within our strategic plan to make sure that students are achieving academically in what goals we are hitting and progressing towards. So, our first objective within that is high quality instruction. Since our last meeting, Mr. Benio, I remember that you specifically asked this team, you know, what data have you been able to provide on purpose statements and exit slips and what impact have they had on instruction? And at that time, we had just started to create a quantitative form to determine how well our purpose statements and exit slips were actually working. And so, I'm going to flip to a future slide and I'll come, go back and forth, but our purpose statement and exit slip is on the next slide. These are copies of the rubric system that we created. It was a four to one scale. What we had is different categories centered around the implementation of a purpose statement and an exit slip. You know, was the purpose statement visible and driven by the learning standards? Was the purpose statement ensuring the rigor of the content of the standards? And as we move over to things like the exit slip, was the exit slip present? Was it addressed? Was there high quality? Was it reaching those higher level questioning techniques that we want our teachers to embrace and understand? And so, this data was collected by principals, assistant principals and some of the deputy chiefs. And you can see across here with all of our different buildings, in the far column on the right is our district average with all the teachers that were observed in that timeframe. If, we associate this with the GPA where 4.0 is perfect and, you know, 4.0 would be A, B with a 3, C with a 2. As far as purpose statements, we were estimating that our district as a whole, our teacher were performing at 2.92, you know, the overall quality. Exit slips were a little bit higher with 2.97, so approaching that C to B range. And as we progress through this, this is not exactly the, exactly where we want to be in terms of measuring this data, but it's a starting point for us to springboard into next year and see how well we can improve our instruction based on those types of things. Additionally, teachers were observed on a weekly basis by principals, assistant principals, W D Chiefs and sometimes some coaches. They were provided feedback from these people based on purpose statements, exit slips and other instructional practices. And our goal for the 2016-17 school year was to be at 75% of classrooms and we hit that just, just over the mark, the 75%, which we were very proud to hit that as one of our key metrics that we hit right off the bat. So, again, it's a small success, but a success that we can build on moving forward, especially with some of the strong leaders that Mr. Moeb was brought into the district to lead our buildings. Additionally, we purchased some necessary assessments to monitor student growth. As John has said before, not all the assessments that we purchased were necessarily aligned with what Youngstown needs and what our students need and what our teachers need to be successful. So, as he was talking about NWEA MAP and there are a few other assessment suites that we are looking to purchase, these assessment systems are going to give us a deeper dive into the data. For example, in the past, we've been constantly measuring comprehension on student reading, but we don't necessarily know why a student couldn't read. Some of these new assessments are going to give us a better look as to why a student can't read so that we can highlight the fundamental skill that our students don't have and how we can support their deficiency and make them grow throughout the school year so that they can get back to being on track and performing at the necessary level. Next, we have continued to monitor student attendance, behavior and grades through weekly bag reports. John has been the main instrument helping compile those for all building leaders. So, since we last met in April, they've been using these and we've been using those in association with our five week reviews. Principals and building leaders have been able to utilize these reports and provide incentives to students in order to combat things like high attendance or high tardies, you know, low attendance rates, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, so that students can make the right choices and make the right corrections so that they can be successful in school and in their adult careers. Finally, to better our delivery of high quality instruction, we, in collaboration with the Special Education Department, have redesigned the system of support for students for general education. In the past, there's been over identification of the special needs students through our RTI process, which we refer to as P S S T. Our students need to have a system of support that encompasses academics, social, emotional and behavioral aspects of their lives. Linda Yose will be speaking about this a little bit more in goal two, but just to reiterate, it's essential that the approach is to support the whole student prior to identifying them as needing special services. So, when we look at this, we're looking at reflection of how the teacher is supporting the whole child socially, emotionally, behaviorally and academically, prior to making a recommendation that they get services or tested for special education. At this time, I'm going to switch over to the man who's going to talk to you about our next challenge.
This subject I'm very excited and passionate to share with all of you. This one deals with our professional development that we started throughout the year, last year, and we're also going to continue throughout this coming school year. It deals with our new instructional framework, which is encompassing the Graduarial Lease of Responsibility, or G R R. Last week, we had some of our Teacher Fellows come in in the summer. We had a nice attendance group that came in and they practiced and they had an introduction of G R R. We have 25, over 25% of our teachers, our core teachers that are part of the Teacher Fellows, and we encourage them to come in and to practice G R R. There are two PD days at the beginning of April that we had that introduced it and then we followed it up in July during the summer school. Those teachers, the Teacher Fellows, which I see some of you out there now, they also got a chance to practice some during our summer school program. We also have a Twitter account, which I'm excited about too, which I will show you some later on with that. It's called hashtag Fellows Achieve. They have conducted Twitter chats and these teachers are on board with the changes that we have and you will see some of the examples that we have. They upload pictures, they upload, oh, thank you, there you go. You can see right there, "To be a true agent of change, you must be flexible, accessible and meaningful." These are some of the Twitters that we have on here. Also, if you look at the end where it says Youngstown City School Leadership offers camp to ease students transitioning to high school, you will see later on, I'm going to talk about the ninth grade academy, but we had some eighth graders that go to Till College this week to experience a bridge governing from eighth grade to ninth grade. What a wonderful experience for them to experience college and also to get a little taste of what ninth grade is going to be about. In addition, instead of trying to, we also have, in addition to our Teacher Fellows, we have an Achieve. We also have our teachers participating in a PD that instead of removing teachers, we're encouraging teachers to provide them support and to attend the Achieving, Striving Teachers. And the Striving Teachers and Teacher Fellows are receiving additional training beyond the rest of the district. Throughout the school year, they're going to have coaches. We also have, I'm just too passionate to be reading off the paper. We have our Instructional Framework Specialists that will be coming in and they'll provide coaching with our teachers, not only our Striving Teachers, but also our General Ed and all of our teachers in the district. We also have our D C O Ts, which are new, but they, we have some new D C O Ts that are entering in too, that will be providing support. We are embracing our teachers, we are supporting our teachers. In addition to the D C O Ts, we have the Instructional Framework, we also have other G R R coaches that are going to be going in. We have our Teacher Fellows, they're going through the process, they're going to be having model classrooms so we can have our teachers go in and watch these teachers teaching. So, when it comes to supporting our teachers, we are here for them. Sorry, I get real excited about that.
One other thing I did want to just add on was the Resident Educator Program is going to be continued for the district. The Resident Educator Program is something that the Ohio Department of Education emphasizes that we do, but in addition to that, we want to bridge what the state of Ohio wants for new educators with Mr. Moeb's vision for what our teachers in Youngstown need. So, as we have new teachers come into the district, you'll hear later in goal four about our workforce and the numbers that are coming in, we need to support them so that they are ready to go day one in the classroom. Oftentimes, some of the teachers say they leave because they don't feel they're being supported in this district. So, enhancing that program, making it align with the strategic plan and the vision for the district will be, will be essential for their success and our success in the classroom. Next, we're going to talk about preparing all children to succeed in post-secondary opportunities. One of the things that we've been able to do throughout the school year, especially since John LaPlante came on board, was to identify, monitor and support students who are not on track. We've been running a on-track, off-track system for students. We've been running our bag reports to help identify students who are not on track, not on grade level. John's been able to correlate this through some of our assessments, benchmark assessments that we've been giving to the students. Also, we've used this information to identify good candidates for our after-school program. So, going into the fall next year, when our after-school program is going to start September 25th, we already have a list of students that at the end of the school year would be good candidates for that program. And so, we highly encourage them to attend the after-school program and get the support they need throughout the school year so that they can be successful and get back on track. Additionally, we use this information of monitoring to identify over 1,100 students that went into our summer school program. This summer school program ran the month of June for four weeks. In that summer school program, we targeted specifically students in grades one, three, five, seven and eight to attend as benchmark years so that we can intervene and provide the necessary support that they need moving into the grades beyond. Our high school students in grades nine or 12 were offered credit recovery services at Shoffin High School where they were able to recover credits of courses they were not able to attain during the school year. Over 85% of the students in summer school showed growth on our pre and post-assessment from the beginning of the end in that month in reading or math. So, of those 1,100 students, we had a high success rate and showing growth for students in those academic areas. Additionally, we are currently, we just started a second summer school session for our third grade students. These are students specific, specifically those who have not passed our third grade reading guarantee yet. They still have an opportunity to pass and move on to fourth grade. What we're trying to do is provide an opportunity for them to get the necessary intervention and instruction in the key areas that they are deficient in so that they are able to pass a third grade reading guarantee assessment and move on to fourth grade without any interruption. Our third grade reading guarantee percentage passing so far, before going into this next session, was 83.4% of our, of our third grade students. So, throughout, through monitoring and support, we hope that we promote them at the beginning of the school year and allow them to be successful moving forward. Also, exposing students to post-secondary opportunities is vital for their ability to be successful no matter what their career path. As Joe Moranto and Dr. Iarussi were up here saying before, there's going to be a collaboration between Mahoning County Career Technical Center and Shoffin Career Technical Center. This merger should provide more opportunities for our students and support for our students and expose them to more opportunities in careers that they might not have had before. Additionally, we're looking to purchase another assessment suite through SAT that allows us to look at students as low as eighth grade. You can test them in eighth, ninth, 10th and give them the SAT in 11th grade. This SAT suite aligns vertically so that the standards that they are assessing correlate year to year and we know how these students are progressing each year. So, the students are going to know, the families are going to know and the teachers are going to know what skills these students have, what they're deficient in, so that they have a, if they have a career path in mind, they know what they need to work on to get there. Also, we're going to continue to offer training and support to all families in filling out financial aid opportunities. During the school year, we were able to get to over 85% of our seniors to fill out the classroom and we look to increase that number in the coming year.
Okay, eliminating the achievement gap. We are going to offer STEM K to 12 this coming school year, which will, previously we had this only available for K to 8, but we're opening it now to K to 12. We're going to expand our out-of-school learning time, we're going to have the after-school program like we did last year, but this time, I'm excited once again to announce that we will have an enrichment opportunity for our K to 8 schools. We're also going to be having high school, we'll be offering an academic support and credit recovery to those students that need it. Finally, we're going to monitor student progress on special challenge subgroups and we're going to talk about the highly qualified instruction within those subgroups. We're going to monitor them through the five-week review. We're going to continue the five-week review. That's another thing, like I said, that I'm somewhat passionate, Greg and I are, we're the ones to go to the buildings and work the principals with it and it's, it's an unbelievable experience to be in there and with all the districts with it and to see the five-week review and to go over the data and to see the growth. So, I would encourage anyone to come to a five-week review. I'm sending out an invitation because it is, it's a great experience. During the five-week review process, it allows us to identify subgroups of students in all different areas. This process allows principals and building leadership teams to make the necessary intervention to support their students. And we, once again, a lot of times we take an input from our principals, our BLTs, even our TVTs, to help improve that, the five-week review. If we're noticing something that we need to improve on or change, we embrace that. So, we're always open for anyone to come in and help us with that. And next, I'm going to have it directed to Greg to talk about the challenges.
So, along with goal one, there come several challenges for us to meet and these are some of our current challenges as we look forward into next school year. The first one is finding that dedicated time for our principals and leaders to have the mentoring and coaching that they need. Amanda spoke earlier about all the professional development that we are giving to our teachers, our Striving Teachers, our Teacher Fellows. They're receiving a lot of professional development. In order for the district to move forward, it's not enough for just our teachers to grow professionally, but our leaders need to grow professionally. So, finding that time for our principals to learn how to become leaders of their building and become better leaders of their building, that time needs to be earmarked and we're working to find time for that. Next, we have had some successes around engaging parents around the instruction and the instruction discussion, but it's not as widespread as we would like. Throughout the school year, we are hoping to improve our range of engaging parents in this discussion. We're hoping that this will be expanded upon with better communication through parents and the building leadership on out to the neighboring schools. Also, we're trying to expand our enrichment activities for our elementaries and after-school program. At this point, we should acknowledge that we do have some great partners that have decided to step up their commitment to Youngstown City Schools. United Way has gone from supporting one of our buildings to five of our elementary buildings. Their increased interest is only going to benefit our students and their academic ability. We've added the Boys and Girls Club and Inspiring Minds as part of our enrichment effort and we hope to grow that so that all of our K buildings can have enrichment programs in the after-school. Another challenge is training staff on new assessments. Anytime there's something new coming in that something has to be done electronically or digitally, there comes with, with that some training. Finding time for training and making sure that the staff are proficient in utilizing that system, it's essential. So, when teachers get this, we want to make sure not only can they give an assessment, but when they get the data back, are they able to understand it, use it to drive their instruction so that our students can grow the way they need to grow and we can support them in the areas that they need supported. Finally, there's a challenge in getting some employee and community members to understand the shifts we are making and why we are making them. Throughout Mr. Moeb's strategic plan, everything that he is doing is, and that we are doing as a district is research-based, that we are trying to make the shifts that are best for our for our school, our district, and our community. That's why we did the district reorganization. Research says that community schools are best. That's why we're going to K to A's. And so trying to help our employee and community members understand that will come through more communication and collaboration throughout the school year. And Amanda's going to talk about the next steps for Goal One.
We're going to create individualized learning plans for students through our new assessment system. So when we are having our students test through the NWEA MAPS, we're going to sit down and figure out good individual learning plans. And when we are working with those individual learning plans, we're going to have an intervention block, and that's something new too this year. Oh, sorry. Thank you. We're going to have an individual, we're going to have an intervention block time where we could sit down and work with these students with their individual learning plans and meeting their needs. Also, we're going to maximize the time we have for instruction. We also have exciting news about a ninth-grade academy at East and Cheney. Like I said before, they are experiencing going to Teal College this week for a transition, but this ninth-grade academy is going to have their own principal, guidance counselor, and deans. And there's going to be a director that is overseeing both of them, the both of the principals at Cheney and East, that will assist them through the process. Next, we will be, will be in need of September planning of the 83 beds created this past spring at each of the school gardens that we have. And finally, this is a, this one goes out to some of my teachers that I saw earlier today. Linda? Yes, this is something that I know you were asking about. Finally, there's going to be an expansion of the socio-emotional learning. We, what, like we said before, we're really trying to listen to all of you out there and asking us questions and wanting support. We, yes, we are going to have a socio-emotional learning, and we're going to be expanding on that, dealing with that, because I know you were asking about that earlier, so I'm excited to announce that to you. Are there any questions?
As it relates to assessment, I assume most of the efforts are at the elementary and middle school levels. When I look at the academic data for the high schools, at that point, I think we would have data as to which students are really falling off track. Where are we focusing our efforts as it relates to assessment?
In terms of assessment, we are focusing on high school, and I think the ninth-grade academies are the best example of how we're focusing on assessment. Those ninth-grade academies are, again, research-driven, that when you get a cohort of ninth-grade students entering high school, when they start off behind track, they're most likely to end up not on track and struggling to graduate. So our focus as far as high school is going to be on that ninth-grade academy, getting those students prepared to go on through. But also, there are after-school programs at the high school that we are going to focus on credit recovery for those students that are not ninth grade this year. Both high schools are trying to offer multiple periods per day and after-school so that students will have an opportunity to earn the credits back that they do not currently have.
In K to one, we also, this coming year, we did DIPLES, and we noticed that, we did progress monitoring weekly with them, and we noticed that that did help us, that we are now expanding, which I'm surprised we didn't put this in here, but I'll tell you now, we're now expanding to K to three. So we're also going to be doing weekly monitoring with that, and TRC, which is dealing with the reading comprehension. We noticed that that was successful with K in one, so now we're going to expand to third grade two.
And also, in the high schools, I forgot to mention that we are going to double-block our reading and math timeframe, so students will be getting twice the amount of instruction throughout the school day on reading and math so that they can, those scores that we saw earlier will be better next year.
Is math a bullet about reimagining the school day? Is that true?
That's part of it, yes.
Yeah, that was part of it.
That is part of it, and also goes with professional development as well. So we're interested in doing double blocks of reading and math, but I'm not interested in more instruction per period of reading and math each day. So as we're adding the time, we also have to add quality. So it all works together. It's not enough just to reimagine the school day and provide additional instructional minutes. We have to also then provide higher-quality instruction.
You have a question? Go ahead.
He has one.
Okay.
Yes, I've been sitting here about 45 minutes, and the first thing I, I, you know, get the grip on is, there's a communication gap here between what y'all saying and what y'all doing and what's out there, you know? And until you fix that problem of the communication gap, being realistic on what's the main problem, why you get the low scores, low attendance, it's economics, period. And I invite anybody in this room that want to try to sugarcoat this thing some kind of way, you know, to get on the bus with me, and I'll take you through the city and to some homes so you can really get a grip on what you're really dealing with and how to fix it from that level up instead of starting up here, coming down. It ain't working. Because not only if you're not, the communication gap is not there, then you got to deal with the way they being raised. I'm keeping it real, I'm going to keep it raw and real. Some of them being raised, not good. So you got to bring all those factors in, then deal with it. You know, it's nice you have this communication, that blocking, this, but that ain't getting it, you know? A lot of these kids, the ones that's successful in school, a lot of them doing things that shouldn't be done to even make it through school. You're dealing with a lot of different avenues, but as long as you keep it up here and not getting down there and bringing it up, you're going to be talking the same stuff year after year after year after year, and statistics has proven it's not working.
For the sake of keeping this rolling, appreciate your comments. One thing I would add, anybody that often comments or questions from the audience would like to see that we get your name for the record.
My name is Brad Cheater. Brad L. Cheater.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comments. There are a lot of challenges that I think we all recognize.
I had to come down here because I see what's going on, and I'm like, man, I know a lot of children that's imprisoned and dead now, that I'm saying, man, if they had it this way or that way, maybe they wouldn't have ended up like that.
So Mr. Cheater, in response, and I want to go into a deep answer, Goal Three of our strategic plan is all around parent and community, and we're working very hard to increase and open the lines of communication. More than just opening the lines of communication, we're trying to get ourselves into the neighborhoods physically, having conversations with parents. However, I will challenge that we are a, we are a district that does suffer from some of the effects of poverty. However, there are other districts, there are other districts that suffer from the same poverty that have higher student outcomes than we.
Right.
So we will not accept that as an excuse. We understand it's a factor. However, we are building a system that's going to push through those factors and so that our students can achieve. So I want to continue, and I understand, I would be happy to have a side conversation with you after this for the interest of time. I'd like to continue with the presentation and hear if there are any other questions or comments from the community in regards to this. Services and Early Childhood Education, she's here working with our Student Services Department, and she has been a really great asset to Youngstown City Schools. At this point, she's going to present the goals and the work around Goal Two.
I'm very pleased to be here this afternoon. Thank you very much. I've been in education about 40-plus years, but I've only been here in the city, in Youngstown School District, since April. And since April, I think we've done a number of different things that has really made a difference in working with our students in special education needs. Working along with what Greg and Amanda said in Goal One, we really have been taking a strong look at what are we doing in our classrooms? What are we doing with our special education students, our English language learners, as well as our gifted education students? In cooperation with Human Resources, we've taken a look at the licensing of all of our teachers, as well as the highly qualified status of each of our intervention specialists. And based on Mr. Moehb's agreement, we have been able to provide them, about 75 teachers, which is 70% of our intervention specialists, with some high-quality professional development in math, language, arts, science, social studies, and pedagogy around teaching. And they are engaged in that currently. So by the time school starts, we'll have teachers who are really addressed what's in the corrective action plan that this district has been under in terms of the high-quality instruction available to our special education students. We've done a comprehensive review of our programs. We've looked at the various things that we need to do to make our special education programs more individualized for our students, really taking a look at each individual student's needs. There has been some push towards inclusion, which we obviously want to have inclusive programs, but we also have to look at each individual student to determine, is that the best for that particular student? So we have increased our opportunities for students who have some resource room support, as well as support in self-contained classrooms, if that is the most appropriate place for those students. But going along with those things are those rigorous courses in AP, as well as the STEM. And I know that Amanda mentioned STEM in the beginning in kindergarten, but we're also dipping down into preschool with some STEM opportunities as well, and looking at those professional growth plans. Going kind of along with that, we've revamped the guidance counselor and social worker job descriptions so that their focus goes back to really spending time with students and families to look at the supports that would be needed. And kind of in response to some of the things that have been mentioned here today, we want to take a strong look at how do we help families work very cooperatively with their children's classroom teacher, as well as the building leaders. We've created, we need to create a culture of what's called positive behavior intervention and support. It's a nationwide research-based type of a program, but basically what it does is it looks at what are the positive things that we are doing in the classroom every single day to reach our students? We know that behavior, obviously, is a part of what we deal with sometimes, but there are opportunities to create that individualized kind of plan within each building, as well as each classroom, for students who are experiencing difficulty. So the positive behavior intervention support is something that we're going to be rolling out in the district. Mr. Moehb would like, it's a tiered system, he would like to see tiers one and two in place, hopefully by the end of October, and then move into tier three. We're using the student discipline data to help us kind of guide that so that we know what are those things that we need to be looking at, along with the health services provided to students, the vision screenings, those kinds of things that are going on. And then increasing students' involvement in the after-school activities. Obviously, it was discussed, the various sports activities that are coming into the district, but there's a whole host of other kinds of after-school activities that we want students to be involved in. We do know that we went from about 300 to almost 1,200 students that participated in after-school programming. In the six months that that occurred, there was a one-year growth in reading of the students that participated, and almost three-quarters of a year's growth in math of the students that participated in the after-school program. We know these things work, and so we want to encourage parents to have their students involved in these things that will assist them. Again, when I refer to the continuum of services, it's really crucial that we look at each of our students individually and what their needs are. We're intending, we have reconfigured these student support department so that there will be a coordinator in every, a special education coordinator in every building and/or shared between some of the smaller buildings so that they can work cooperatively with the guidance counselor, the social worker, the administration in the building, the school psychologists, and that they're integral parts of those building leadership and teacher-based teams. We feel that it's really important, then, that they can look at those students' IEPs, they can work with the teachers to make sure that we actually have very clear goals and objectives for our students. We're creating some plans to try to analyze goals and objectives, to see how successful we are being, and what the kinds of specialized services that we're providing to our special education students. Along with that, we, it was mentioned earlier by Amanda and Greg that the PSST process, which has been in place in the district, we're kind of replacing it with what's called MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. And we've kind of renamed it Youngstown Success for All kind of idea. But the problem in the district oftentimes has been that we have used that process to identify students as special education students, when in fact, the process comes out of general education, and it's a way of looking at what do each of our students need to be successful in school, and how do we put those pieces in place? Does not necessarily mean that they are disabled youngsters. What we need to begin to look at is if we're talking about a sixth-grade student, they are a sixth-grade student of the general curriculum who also happen to receive special education services. They are not special education sixth graders. So we always need to keep in mind that we are responsible for every single student, and then if we provide them with the special education related services that they need to be more successful within the district. So some of our next steps is really kind of providing the co-teaching and inclusionary practices. We are planning on embedding that by the use of the coordinators and those teams that we're establishing in each building. We're really trying to reach out to parents. They receive a procedural safeguard booklet at each IEP meeting, each evaluation team review, but beyond that, we want teachers to be more familiar with that language of special education, which unfortunately can be quite daunting sometimes. We use a lot of acronyms in special education, and I think sometimes we tend to lose parents, and that's not fair to them. So we need to make sure that we are helping them understand their rights and responsibilities as a parent of a student with disabilities, but also that they have a federal right to come to the district and question what it is we're doing in special education to meet the needs of their students. So we're planning community meetings around that. We're also planning open houses in each specific special education classroom so that the parents and their students can feel a much better sense of community coming into that building and meeting their teacher, especially if they have been reconfigured this year, helping them feel a lot more comfortable. Some of the students that we're referring to have quite a bit in the way of challenges with their disability, and this is, again, a way for them to feel a lot more comfortable as they come into the building. We're establishing IEP team reviews within each building so that the IEPs are reviewed very carefully, and that we can get dressed out to parents well in advance of the IEP meeting, because what we want is, we want parent participation, we want parent voice. We want to make sure that they are part and parcel of what their child is learning and that the goals and objectives align with the families and the stakeholders as well. Part of special education is called PINS, which is, really goes along with a student's interests and their, you know, where we see students down the road. Special education has what is called transition planning, beginning at age 14. We want to really focus on that transition planning so that we know our students' college, are career-ready, are they ready for the military? That plan builds upon itself as you begin in seventh grade toward graduation. So when they do graduate, we have those pieces in place that are going to help support them in what they want to do post-secondary. We want to create some links on the website. First of all, for intervention specialists, all the resources that they need are available to them. But secondly, we want there to be a place for parents so that if they have questions, they know where to go. There will be answers for them, there will be contacts for them, there will be some resources for them to read about some different things. And then we want to really be working very closely with the building administration on scheduling and making sure that our students are where they need to be and getting the support and specialized services that are necessary for them. We have 10 teachers that next week are going to go through what is called CPI, Crisis Prevention Institute, training. One of the things that we recognize is that we need to be able to intervene very early on students who are experiencing behavioral difficulties, social-emotional kinds of difficulties. This particular type of training is based on being proactive, looking at what is happening, and intervene early. So the idea is that we will not, we will really decrease those out-of-school, in-school suspension types of things. And then we will roll that out in a three-year plan, starting this year with students, teachers with students with multiple disabilities and those with students identified with an emotional disturbance. So it'll be a process, but over the three years, we're hoping then that we will be able to train all staff in those areas. Any questions for me? Thank you, I appreciate your time this afternoon.
Hello, my name is Linda Hoy. I am the district's current liaison coordinator. It's a long name. Now, I'm not as polished as everybody's been up here because I'm used to keeping it, as the gentleman said, raw and uncut. I'm not a reader, so I'm going to try and get through here and explain to you exactly what we're doing with parent engagement. This is a position that I've held now for 15 years. I love my position. In fact, I think that I have one of the best positions in this district because dealing with the parent is such a, it helps to just show me that what we're doing is exactly what we need to be doing, because parents are real and they're honest, and they're going to say how they feel. So I want to go here with, the first thing we're doing is we realize- So I want to go here with, the first thing we're doing is we're realizing that customer service in our district is not always up to par. I'm just going to keep it real. A lot of times, our parents are not wanting to come into our district, they're not wanting to talk to our staff because they feel that there's implicit biases that people feel about them. So one of the things that we're checking into is we're actually identifying an organization that can come in and take the whole entire district through customer service. When I say the whole entire district, I'm not just talking about teachers and principals, I'm talking staff in the cafeteria, I'm talking about our, I'm talking about our maintenance people, I'm talking about everybody in the district because those children at some point is going to come in contact with every single one of the people in our district and we need to know how to treat them with respect. Our parents are going to come in contact with each and every one of those people. So what we're doing is we're identifying companies that can come in and get services with that. With that alone, knowing how to talk to our parent families, knowing how to communicate with our families, that alone is going to help them to drop their guard and want to come in to be more engaged. So that in itself, I think is an awesome thing that we're doing and I think that we should be mindful and we should just accept that we do need to wrap up our customer service. As far as our family and dealing with their child's education, at the end of this year, we did a poll with some of our families. 213 of those surveys was completed by our parents. And one of the questions that we asked our parents was, if we were to offer you free training, free sessions, what would you be interested in having in those, their sessions? Our parents, the very first thing on their list was school policies. The second on their list, and it actually tied with another, was understanding my child's classroom and managing my money. The third thing that they said they wanted to have free sessions on was healthy eating and urban gardening. Now, I know a lot of times people say that parents do not want to be involved, but those topics that our parents are asking for, that shows me that they want to be involved. Our parents want to know about school policies. They want to understand because when they sit down with teachers and when they sit down with administrators, they want to understand what they're talking about, which falls into what Linda was saying. We want our parents to own this. We want our parents to feel like they are part of this. We want them to feel like they own their child's education, and they do. And you have to forgive me because I can't even tell you how nervous I am right now with all the glaring activity here. Okay, well, I'm going to move on. And as you can see, we have adopted a servant leadership. It was Greg and Amanda that mentioned about the different organizations that are coming in, helping our children in the, from the community. He talked about Boys and Girls Club, The United Way. One of the things that I'm very excited about is that Mr. Mohep has also stretched out to those grassroots community organizations. And when I say grassroots, I'm talking about homegrown Youngstown individuals forming groups and organizations to be able to help our parents, to be able to help those parents that we have a hard time reaching, those young parents. So these homegrown grassroots organizations such as City Kids Care, The Colony, The Red Zone, those people can identify with these parents. They're around their age. Those parents are more apt to go to them, to listen to them. So I'm grateful that Mr. Mohep has brought them on board so that they can work with us to reach those parents, which are the younger parents that we're, we have a hard time reaching. One of the things that we are concentrating on, I'm standing here now, my mouth is getting dry. Okay, and like I said, we're concentrating on customer service and so I'm glad that we are working with those individuals in order for us to reach, thank you so much. In order for us to reach those parents that we have a difficulty reaching. And in order to reach those young parents, I'm an old lady, I'm not with the Twitter and all of that, most out to is Facebook. So what Ms. House, who's in our Parent Pathways office, has done is she has actually set up a Twitter account for us. And our Twitter account is @parentuniversity. And when I say parent university, what we're doing is, all of those sessions, look, I got more water than I need. What about a punch cord? What about a pencil? So what we're doing, and why would I do that, I'm going to lose track here. So what we're doing is we did, we set up that Twitter account. The Twitter account is also linked up with our Facebook, our Facebook account. One of the things we want to do is we do want to reach those younger parents because that's all they do is they tweet, they're on Facebook, so we are trying to reach those younger parents also and make sure that we get the information out there that they will need about what's going on in the district. So parent university, I wanted to explain that. Parent university is actually some of these sessions that we asked and surveyed our parents about. So what we're doing is we're, throughout the year, we're doing these sessions for our parents. We're doing them through a community, parent community meeting that we hold once a month, district level here. And we're also, we also have what we call a pride meeting that we do once a month in the evenings. We're going to have some of those sessions through those meetings and we're also going to have individual sessions. We've already contacted different organizations that are willing to come in and go over some of the stuff that the parents said they wanted. And then what we're going to do at the end of that, if we have parents that have came for six sessions or more, we've already reserved, God Bernie has already reserved Wick Park for us, and at the end of the year, we usually do a big huge picnic. Well, in this particular case, we're going to do a graduation for our parents. The parents have been through those sessions, we're going to hold a little pop in circumstance and a little graduation for them, and then we're going to do a picnic at the end. We want to celebrate them, no matter what people tell you about our parents. Our parents are the best.
Yes, they are.
And they want to be involved and we want to celebrate them. Let me move on, I'm acting like a wimp here. I think the next one.
I'm feeling a little bit hungry, so if anyone wants to bring some chicken wings, feel a little faint. But I did, I'm sorry, I did want to just show this at this point, is that we're launching a new logo for the Youngstown City Schools. And really, what I really wanted to highlight was just some of the things that kind of went into this design. It's not just a wire that says Youngstown City Schools. I mean, our tagline is honoring the past and embracing the future because that's what we're really trying to do here. As we've come into this new administration, we have really reached out to the community to find out what is the pride in Youngstown, what is the past, and really, we want to pay some homage to that. So when you look even at the logo itself, we went back to the past and we looked at the two high schools we have remaining, East and Cheney, and we said we wanted to continue the red of Cheney and honor the past of East with the gold, and that's where the gold comes in there with the yellow. But really, when you look at embracing the future, it's the excitement that we feel every day, whether it's with, whether it's Amanda really cheerleading around some of our profession development or Lori who starts crying every time she talks about parents and just the support that she has, it's just, we really are embracing the future, we're really excited about where we're going and all the challenges that have been well documented throughout this year and even the missteps. We have really come together as a unit. We have really come together, not just as a district, but as a community. And as Linda talked about, being out in the community with The Colony, with The Red Zone, with City Kids Care, really getting to know parents. And, you know, part of the redesign and the reconfiguration was the fact that our building principals and leadership teams were too far away from their kids. And so it's not just about making it easy for kids to come to school, it's also making it easy for our school leadership to be able to go to our parents and find them and have those conversations with them. In addition to the new logo that's going to be rolled out, we're also redoing our entire school website. We want to make it easy for people to go and get information. We want to be able to make it app-friendly so they could find it on their phones. We're looking at different technologies. So when we talk about attendance, when a child doesn't come to school, where parents are going to get a phone call, an email, and a text to let them know that their child missed second period or third period or whatever the case may be. And then we're going to put into that website a new system, it's called Let's Talk. And with that Let's Talk system, it's what it does is it's going to help me and help our district kind of combat some of the lagging and nagging issues that I've heard around, well, I've called the district, I've been waiting three months and I've never gotten a phone call back. Well, if we're going to set forth an initiative and say, we're going to respond to every call and every comment within seven to two hours, we need a system to track all of those calls and then hold people accountable to get, to make sure that they're following up and then going out and getting feedback from that person to see, did we handle that call efficiently and with respect? And so a nice part of the system is parents could go on, click a button, and then type their question, but also it's going to tie into our phone systems. So when somebody calls from a home number that we have on our directory, it will pop up on our secretary screen or our switchboard screen to say, this is a parent's home number. Is there a question or a comment that we need to put into the system? So it's really high-tech stuff at a very low cost, but really about changing the metrics and changing the dynamics of what we hear in this district. I wish that gentleman had not left so we could hear some of the things that we're doing, but we really are trying to, and really being strategic about how we are communicating with our, with our, with our community. So I'll just finish up for you, Linda, as far as some of the challenges and goals. We continue to hear complaints and as I've talked about, and we come from parents not being able to communicate with the school and also with the school not communicating with parents. So we want to be able to, to be able to fix that, talking about our schools going in and doing home visits and the response time to the inquiries. Some other things that we're going to do with our, with goal three is we want to identify space for parent resource centers. It's part of the strategic plan that we have parent resource centers in every room. And a parent resource center isn't just a place for coffee, it's a place to help parents with some of the skills, get some of the training that they talked about, but also prepare them to enter back into the workforce if they aren't working. I talked about the Let's Talk, the increase of Pride. So Pride is a program that Linda talked about where we had about 150 graduates from this year, we're looking and pushing that, we want to see an increase in, by 25% for next year. We're looking to move parent meetings from downtown out into neighborhood schools. We've seen that model through our CEO update meetings where we don't do them here in central office. We go into the community to where the parents are and we see that they're really well-attended when we do that. And then I am personally going to make sure that I have monthly meetings out in the schools, whether it's coffee with the CEO or opportunities for parents to engage and provide feedback to me. We did that again, we did that again this, we did that this year, we had about 90 community events where I participated or I led to get feedback from the community, but we want to continue that. And just because we're going into year two doesn't mean we're going to pull away from that. And then we're going to have a parent involvement calendar so parents can know what's happening, where it's happening, and start planning around that. If there are any questions about goal three, I will definitely invite Linda back up to handle those, but does anybody have any questions? Okay, at this point, I'm going to have Ty Overston and Cheryl McCarthy come in to talk about goal four.
I'll start the presentation, recruiting high-quality staff and joining, joining the district, really by going over some facts and then I'll turn it over to Cheryl McCarthy here. I'm not sure if everyone knows that nationally, college enrollment and teacher preparation programs have dropped by 35%. And with that, you know, that comes challenges for us in recruiting, and that's at the national level, 35% decrease in individuals going to college for college, for education. At the state level, there's a shortage of math teachers, science teachers, and teachers of English language learners. At the local level this year, we had 58 resignations this past year, 17 were retirees. This is the fewest number in the last four years. Again, this is the fewest number in the last four years. Some people are happy to stand around, people are much more vested in the process of what's going on here. I share with you the teachers that we still need to hire, Mr. Mohep mentioned that earlier, we need 55 teachers. And again, we will have these teachers, high-quality teachers in place by the first day of school. Of these 55 teachers, 10 are needed for math and science, a total of 10, not 10 each, but a total of 10 teachers in need for math and science. If you know of individuals who are looking for jobs in the math and science field, please make sure they contact us here at the district office. Of the 28 electives, and I think it's really important to share with the community, we're looking for phys ed teachers, foreign language teachers, especially those who speak Spanish. We're looking for music teachers, drama teachers, and those also interested in teaching STEM. And again, that concludes my part of it. I'll turn it over to Cheryl, who will cover some four key factors around compensation, teacher turnover, working conditions, and people's qualifications.
Good afternoon, I'm happy to report, I checked my email, I think we can reduce that number of positions that are open by eight because today we had eight, eight individuals except positions with the district. I know, I'm happy to go ahead. Recruiting high-quality staff to join the district, this is ongoing, as you heard me say, we have eight folks except today. Our principals are in the process of interviewing daily and making offers to folks. Our recruitment calendar is through November, is ongoing, we have meetings even next week with universities. One thing we're doing is establishing relationships so that students can have Youngstown City Schools as an opportunity for residency programs, student teaching, and student internships. And when that happens, they are already vested with the district, so when it's time for them to graduate and look for a job, they're interested in Youngstown City Schools. Another focus, we talked about, you heard Linda talk about parent involvement, we need to be more involved with our staff so that we can retain high-quality staff. We've actually been developing a budget that we can use for recruitment and employee development, you can see some of the areas we are going to focus on. Exit interviews, happy to say they can contact with the ASME and YEA. We're going to send exit interviews to folks who've chosen to leave the district to find out why, what can we do better? And we talked about communicating with the public, we need to do a better job at communicating with our staff as well. So another thing we're looking at is making sure that all of our staff have email so that we can communicate with them. Creating opportunities for staff to grow professionally and advance their career with the district. You've heard us talk about, you heard Linda Yosey talk about how we collaborated to talk about high-quality professional development for teachers, Greg and Amanda, Colleen. Human Resources is working with all of our leaders to make sure that all of our staff, clerical staff, are getting the trainings that they need. Linda talked about a district-wide training. We want to make sure that all of our staff has the training they need to provide the supports necessary for the district. And it also shows that the district and Mr. Mohep have a value on qualifications and the human capital of the district. Our next step for human resources, I talked in April about finding some efficiency, ways to be more efficient and effective in the district. HR Kiosk and Public School Works are two software programs that we're going to be rolling out for the start of the school year. HR Kiosk will help us with assisting with payroll as far as when people are taking off reporting and tracking days off. It'll also help us with our local professional development committee. Public School Works will help us with compliance, bloodborne pathogens, and child abuse training. So we have a record of all those requirements at the state. We're going to be working with the Civil Service Commission to make sure that we're getting a good pool of applicants. And orienting classified staff through the onboarding process. We've already transitioned the administrative and certified hiring processes and onboarding. It's important when people start a new job that we welcome them and make them feel welcome. In the past, sending a packet out to a new employee, fill this out, send it back, it doesn't establish that initial connection. So what we've done is make sure that we're establishing a connection, that we see every person that's going to be working in the district, that they have a face and a name and folks to contact when they come to the district. Another thing that we've done is in, I'm like, Linda. So what we've done with our administrative and certified hiring process. So what we've done is for our administrative and certified hiring process, we kind of, we're going to make a more fidelity process. So all of our candidates have a better job, have job descriptions, so they understand what they're going to be accountable for. All of our positions were posted through AppleTrack, everyone had equal footing and equal opportunity to be seen. Two-step interview process that included leadership from the district, Mr. Mohep, and, you know, the background checks, referrals, all of those processes take place. And one thing that I know that has been talked about a lot in the media is the salary. While the salaries may seem high, they're on par with, if you looked at the current structure, we had folks that were working 219 days or 193, but when you take those daily rates and expand them out to 261 days, that salary is commensurate with what it would have been at 219 days. So our leadership is now working So our leadership is now working, they don't have the summers off, those pushy 10-month, 11-month jobs. These folks are working 12 months a year now, so 261 days. Another process or software that we're looking at is Time Clock Plus. Again, it'll assist with payroll, making sure we have the efficiency in payroll so folks aren't not getting paid. It will also help with scheduling for classified staff, our custodians. So we make sure that we have enough people in the buildings and in the offices when we need them. And of course, we're going to continue reaching out and working with our universities and recruitment groups and HBCUs. Any questions?
Good afternoon. Mr. Mohib said we have two and a half minutes of peace between Colleen and myself. I don't know if we can meet that, I don't know if I can meet that goal. My name's Tony DiNero. I'm Deputy Chief of Maintenance and Operation. Like Linda, I've been in education for over 40 years. All of my time has been at Youngstown City Schools, and I'm very proud of that. I really am. The other thing I'm very proud of is that I got the opportunity, I'm going to go over my time a little bit, okay? Is that okay, Mr. Benio? Thank you. I had the opportunity to oversee our construction project back in 2000 when we built all of our new schools. It was a $200 million project, and I was very proud to be the one overseeing that project. And we did come up with some fantastic buildings. We thought we had everything done then, back in 2000. And as we look now, and I'll go to the first part of my presentation, we're looking at upgrading the entire camera system for our buildings. You know, when we build our new schools, we were so excited because our high schools are getting 32 cameras, our elementary schools are getting 16 cameras. We said, wow, we've never had cameras in our buildings. This is going to be fantastic. Here we are, 17 years later, we don't have enough cameras. They're all analog cameras, and there's just not enough, and they're starting to wear out. We just completed installing 124 digital cameras at East High School. And so you can see where we've come and where we need to go. Our next goal is to get new cameras at Chaney High School and all of our other buildings, going from analog to digital. Fortunately, we're able to take those old cameras out of East, and we're using them in our buildings right now where we find out we don't have enough cameras. We're repositioning cameras. So our goal is to make sure that all of our buildings have those upgraded digital cameras. I continue to work with the architect as we renovate this building. There's another situation where I worked with Brett Hendricks when we built Wilson and when we built the new East High School. So, you know, old friends come together again, and Brett is working diligently on this building to turn it into a school for Youngstown Area College. We've met with Brett on several occasions. We've involved Monica Jones, the principal of Youngstown Area College. We've laid out the floor spaces. Right now, we're in the process of bringing on the engineers to do the internal work as we prepare to have this building ready for Youngstown Area College, hopefully in March. Right now, the other challenge we have, and I commend Mr. Mohib again for having the vision to return our children to their neighborhoods as much as we can. Our buildings are now going to be K through 8. We opened Chaney up again as a high school, East as a high school, but it takes a little bit of retrofitting, and that's what our maintenance and operation department's working on right now. We have done such a great job of moving everybody around. We started with moving teachers' boxes, hundreds of boxes, to the buildings where they're going to, because many of our teachers change their schools for next year. We've moved student records around. We're now moving furniture around. We've done everything in-house, and I got to say, we have not incurred any overtime. So our guys are working hard, and I'm very proud of what they're doing in-house. So we are just about done getting them ready to begin their cleaning process, the final cleaning process, as we open schools. We are signing a contract with the Raptor program. It's a high-tech program that will interface with our computers in our buildings where we will check visitors in. In the past, as we have, we handwrite passes to visitors that go into our buildings and want to see different things. Right now, as they come in, there's two methods of doing it. If they have a license, the license goes into a machine, it automatically puts the picture of that chap person up, tells us if there's any problems with their background and any type of situation they may have. If they don't have a license, we put their name and their birthday, and it will also tell us if there's any problems with that person as a visitor, to make sure that we are checking into people that need to be brought into our buildings. We're working with our transportation, Colleen and myself. We have all GPS systems in our buses right now, but we're going to expand that to our maintenance vehicles. We have approximately 37 maintenance vehicles that we want to put GPS systems in those so we're able to track everything that they're doing on a daily basis. We are creating a custodial work schedule, so we will know what our custodial staff is doing every 10 minutes of the day. We have been doing a draft copy of that, which will be given to Mr. Mohib. Also, we are relining our maintenance division. Right now, our custodians, they have a lot of work to do. Our buildings are very busy, and we're trying to keep those custodians inside the buildings rather than put them outside. So we're looking at realigning that and maybe having our ground crew take care of the outside of the buildings, looking at other resources to take care of a lot of our empty lots that we own. You know, we tore a lot of schools down, but we still own the properties, and we need to keep the grass cut, and we know right away when the grass isn't cut because the phones start ringing. And so it keeps our ground crew very busy, especially in the summertime. So we're looking at other avenues to help our custodial staff to stay inside that building, make sure that building stays clean. And along with that, we've developed a monthly walkthrough checklist that will be going through the building every month, looking at what's going on, making sure that they're doing the job they should be doing. There's going to be a bigger presence of us in the building this year in comparison to last year from the Department of Maintenance and Operation. And lastly, we're working on automating our requisitions with John LaPlante, so that right now we have paper requisitions. We're able to track them, but not to the degree we'd like to, excuse me, like to. So we're going to do that on automation, do our requisitions online, which will be a learning process for everyone. Any questions? Did I talk fast enough? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Lori Lewis, and I have children in the district. My question is for the busing. Will the preschoolers be riding the buses with the eighth graders in the schools?
I will let my counterpart, Ms. Colleen Murphy-Pink, take care of that. She's in charge of transportation.
And it was coinciding with that, I have a 12-year-old, and she wants to go to the YUC, but she doesn't want to have to ride the bus with the high schoolers. So is she going to have to ride going into seventh grade with the high school kid? Same question.
That's a nice transition. Well, last to the podium, all right, but our group of transportation professionals, they are the first ones to greet your children every day with a friendly smile and to welcome them to another new school day. And I know that there are a couple of questions you want me to answer first.
You guys mind if we tell her her presentation? She'll answer them in the end. There may be some other questions.
And then I'll come back to your questions. Is that okay? All right. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, as Mr. Mohib kind of stole my thunder on the fact that we have reduced the walk areas for many of our children this year. Previously, the high school students had walked four miles to the school. And also, children had walked up to four blocks last year to get to a bus stop. The upcoming school year, children will walk a maximum of one mile to their building, and we're trying to reduce that walk area a little more for the smaller children. The ride time for children had previously been up to two hours because we were busing children from one end to the other of 55 square miles. This year, with the reconfiguration, ride time will be a maximum of 45 minutes, and I think that's exciting news for everybody. We have added a lot of technology to increase accountability. This accountability is not only just for our drivers, a tool for our drivers to use, but also for the parents. They, you can go to the website, you can download an app for your phone, you can see when your bus is coming. You can go to the website, you can see where your bus stop is, what time your bus is coming. If you have alternate transportation requests, like a daycare request, you can see where that information has been entered in. Tyler Drive is going to be a tool for the drivers. It's going to be an iPad. It's going to be installed right in the front of the school bus. So the information that is inputted into, in the office, will be pushed right out to the school bus. So they will have the most up-to-date information at all times. E-Link is the information for your bus stop, and E-Link is also what's used in every one of our buildings. We already tested it. They were able to pull their bus lists off of it for summer school this year, and it worked fabulously. My Stop was also used during the summer school program. So some of the technology that we had talked about in April, we have actually got it out of the box, then got it up and running, and we have tested it, which is exciting news. The challenges are always changing the culture, the way we've done things in the past, changing processes, moving forward. We're moving out of, you know, pencil paper into technology. Everything will be entered into a computer. We will be doing all of our pre-trip inspections electronically. That information will be automatically sent back to the garage, and we'll be able to follow the process and make sure that those repairs are completed. We'll be able to maintain an inventory of commonly-used parts. And we're going to implement a preventative maintenance program and make sure that buses are brought in at service intervals like 6,000, 12,000 miles, and we'll determine, you know, what needs to be checked and make sure that every bus is safe and roadworthy and that, or if a bus needs to be taken off the road, that is replaced in a timely manner. Finding qualified drivers and finding quality people to drive the school bus, I mean, it's a tough job. It really is. And so I think that that task will always be a huge challenge for our department. And, you know what, we are always embracing the opportunity to bring new people in and get them trained. We're always looking for bus aides as well. Student data and changing the way that we have received our student information in the past, we've been working very closely with John LaPlante. John has, I mean, student information in transportation is fluid. What we have one day changes the next day. So being able to link up everything that we do with our, it's called DASL, our student information system, so that the two communicate on a daily basis and that we ensure that all of our student information is the same. We are one. And I know that I'm supposed to keep it short, and I am a couple of minutes over, and I do apologize. But you know what, I invite you to come and see what we're doing. We have on-screen where you can, you can see the buses on the screen, the Tyler Drive. I mean, there's just so many things, so many tools that we're putting in the toolbox, not only for the people in the office, but for the parents and for the drivers. We have absolutely fantastic things going on in transportation. Please come see for yourself. All right? And let me see, questions were, okay, preschool through eighth grade, yes, they will ride together. They are family groups. They are people that live in your neighborhood. As a matter of fact, they could be siblings. They will be seated age appropriately on the bus, which means preschool sits in the front, kindergarten, first grade, and so on and so forth.
Will there be enough assistance on the bus to handle if like preschoolers, because there's no seatbelt, right?
Correct. Any vehicle over 10,000 pounds gross vehicle weight doesn't require seatbelts.
If some of the kids are out of control on the buses, which you can ride past, and you can see them sometimes when they're new drivers going, what's going to happen on the bus? How is the preschoolers going to be kept safe and the other kids? Because that's a big age difference. And some preschoolers don't have siblings in the district, so the bus is their first introduction to school on the preschool, and if they have that scary experience on the bus, it'll carry on into the classroom, and that'll be bad for the preschool. How will that be addressed?
And I understand, and I can assure you that the safety of every child on the school bus is our first concern as well. And we are trying to get enough aides that we can have someone or assistance, that we can have someone on every bus. Last year, you know, the drivers did an absolutely fantastic job dealing with different groups of kids, morning and afternoon, and trying to learn their different names and the different schools. I mean, it was, it was mayhem. This year, they will have the same children, morning and afternoon. They will have the opportunity to learn their, who their customers are, who their children are on the bus. And when you get to, when you get to build a rapport like that with the children on the bus, you do not have the behavior issues that you have when you have too many different faces every morning and every afternoon. Yes, ma'am?
I am a bus driver.
I live at the C.
Yeah, I'm a bus driver.
Yes.
And we had a relationship with our kids once upon a time, until last year when somebody else did our route scores and everything, and they made this big mess up and, you know, and everything like that. And from what I'm hearing, we're going to build our routes off every year. So that's one thing, and I'm trying to figure out why do I need a note pad on the bus when I'm going to be driving, you know, whatever that thing is that you want me to look at, you know?
You know what, a lot of these things we can talk about in our staff meeting that I'm sure you got your schedule for already, all right? But you know what, this just enhances safety. Having those iPads right there with all the changes that we have every day, you're going to know, any change that occurs on your bus is going to be right there for you to see. There is no room for error. And you know what, the safety of the children is foremost.
Oh, I agree.
Yes. Okay. And we have one more question.
It was about the seventh grader having to ride with the high school kids going to Youngstown Early College, Rand Early College.
REC.
Yeah.
Okay. All the REC children will ride together. So if it's the REC program...
So seventh, eighth, ninth grade, no matter what grade?
No. Their, their program is...
Early is Capri.
Oh, it's, okay.
My child's right there. I'm trying to figure out what's...
2:30 to, all right, 7:30 to 3, right? That's what we decided? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, I don't have, you know what, we have 22 schools that we transport children to, and sometimes, and we have all new schedules this year. We met with all the schools, we rearranged all the schedules, so I apologize for not remembering what the schedule was. All right, any more questions for transportation?
No, but it's okay.
Thank you very much for your time, Ms.
No.
Want to thank everybody for the...
Want to thank everybody for the opportunity for us to present. I do want to thank my team. They have been, as you can see, from the last three months, we've been busy. There's a lot of things that we're doing. There's a lot that still has to be done. But I'd be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to thank both unions, the school board, and all of our employees, because sometimes we do disagree. But at the end of the day, we are working together for the betterment of these kids, and we do understand that there is an urgency about us and that we are moving quickly to put this district on the right footing. And as you can see, from when we started to where we are now, just a year later, we are making some bold moves, and we're making the right moves to help this district improve. So to the ADC, that is our presentation, unless you have any other questions. Thank you.
Can we get the lights up? I want to thank everybody for preparation for today's meeting and the work that's taken place over this past year. Coming from a business environment, I appreciate how difficult change can be. It's always challenging to make change. It's easy to be criticized. Over the past year, the ADC's role is really a oversight role. As you've seen, the ADC has not been very vocal in the, hold on a minute, the execution of education here in the city. We are engaged and aware, but we feel we have capable leadership in place. With that in mind, I did have a prepared statement that I wanted to read, kind of a closing of this year's business as we look ahead and hopefully build on the progress that's been made. As chairman of the Youngstown City Schools Academic Distress Commission, I'd like to acknowledge the tireless and selfless work that CEO Mohib has put forth over this past year. He has demonstrated a level of commitment, dedication, and that is beyond what could have been expected. I would also like to acknowledge the sacrifice to his family that is made during this time, to a degree that I do not totally agree with or condone. CEO Mohib has put his job ahead of his family and personally. As a community, we are blessed to have him and his leadership role that he is giving. I offer a similar acknowledgement to the extra effort, extra hours and dedication put forth over this past year by the district's senior leadership team, the building leadership teams, and many in the district's central office. The extra hours and late nights that many of you have put forth over this past year is making a difference. We'd be remiss if we did not acknowledge the work and contributions by many of our district's classified employees who tirelessly work to see that the students arrive safely, to clean schools, and provided with a warm meal. Thank you for stepping forward to embrace the changes, undertaking the efforts to realize improvements in the services you've provided over this past year. I am certain that we will make further progress in the coming school year. Lastly, on behalf of the Academic Distress Commission, I'd like to acknowledge the individual teachers who have embraced the call to critically evaluate the performance in the classrooms and to adopt new teaching methods and techniques for the sake of improvement of education here in the city schools. I believe the majority of our teachers as professional educators have embraced the efforts to improve the educational outcome in the district, and we thank you for these efforts. As educators in the Youngstown City Schools, the work that you do to overcome the challenges that many of our students face is a calling and a service to our community. Thank you. Over the past year, there have been many instances where things could have been better planned, more thoughtfully communicated or executed, with more input or dialogue occurring. In any organization undergoing the extent of changes that this school system is seeing, it is easy to find talking points to criticize. It is hard to find solutions. Over the past year, putting students and educators first has not come easy to some individuals and groups. We can only hope that this will change in the coming school year. With that thought in mind, I close with a simple and truthful quote offered by Henry Ford. If everyone is moving forward together, then success takes care of itself. I hope all of you embrace that idea as we move into this coming year, and we have an opportunity to taste success together. Thank you. Kind of motion to adjourn?
Is there going to be a public comment section?
Yes, we will grant you that.
Larry Ellis, president of Youngstown Education Association. And my first question would be to the commission. As you realize, your law, under law, your role is the oversight of the district, of the CEO. You control the employability of the CEO and that. What do you determine as a year under HB 70? Because we know, under House Bill 70, that there are different years that require different things to kick in under House Bill 70. So what does the Academic Distress Commission consider the ending of that year and the beginning of another year?
I think that's a question I'd have to take to regular council and attempt to answer.
Okay. Correct. And just, you know, just to comment on a couple of things. First of all, you know, a couple of things that were talked about today, especially with the budget. I do hope that everybody's looking at the budget and not relying heavily on those tax levy dollars. Just a reminder that the employees of this district, especially the teachers, took pay freezes for many, many years, that we're just now seeing the effects of for people that are retiring and not seeing as much in retirement, to get the district out of fiscal emergency, and I certainly hope that we're not headed back into that area. Along with, you know, is brought up, and I've been contacted by several parents, several of my members. It's, you know, the middle of July, and we still don't even have schedules for next year. We hear that there's now schedules. You know, people, not only employees, but parents need to plan for childcare, who's going to be there to get their children off to school, who's going to be there when they get home from school, and it would be nice if we had those soon. Then one last thing I did want to touch on is just, you know, with the teachers being moved around, you know, unassigned, it's just, are we looking at the best interests of the students when? We have an example of where we've had a teacher for 28 years that has taught in pre-K through second grade, and as a punishment, because she was off with a knee replacement to end the school year, she's now going to be placed in sixth grade next year. So I mean, it's just things like that, and there's, there's other situations. I'm not going to call each one out. That's just one of the glaring reminders, you know, that she's talked with administration, even administration has, some of the administration has agreed that that's, that's not fair. It's not only not fair to the employees, it's not fair to the students. She's going into a classroom to teach something that she doesn't know about, she doesn't have the materials for, she's never had the professional development to that level. So it's just things like that, and I think, I appreciate you saying you're taking a hands-off approach, but I think maybe the commission does need to maybe take a hands-on approach and be involved as the overseeing agent of the district and not giving all the power to one person.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments before we wrap up today's meeting? Thank you. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Second.
Brian Daniel?
Yes.
And some shivers. Jennifer Oliver.
Yes.